Notice is hereby given that the City Council of the City of Caldwell, Burleson County, Texas will convene in a regular meeting at the City Council Chambers, 107 South Hill Street, Caldwell, Texas. Regular meeting place thereof at 5:30 PM September 17th. A quorum is present, so we will begin. We'll begin with the pledge and prayer by cabin Novak.
Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for your blessings. Father, we thank you for this great city that we live in, and we ask your blessings upon Caldwell and its citizens. Father, we pray for that we make decisions that are pleasing and honoring not only to the citizens, but more importantly to you. And Father, we lift up our first responders and our, uh, our police department and all those that take and protect us and keep us safe, Lord, and ask blessings upon them. And Lord, if it is in your will to send some rain, we sure could use it, Lord. We thank you for your blessings. We thank you for the state. We thank you for this country we live in, and pray blessings upon the United States of America. In Christ's name we pray.
Amen.
Especially the American flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Texas flag.
On honor of the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Good afternoon, and welcome to the guests that are here. That means you're interested in our city, and we appreciate that. Uh, no citizens to be heard?
No.
All right. Consent agenda items. There's a lot, guys. So are there any questions or discussions on consent agenda items? And if not, do we have a motion to accept?
So move.
Second?
A second.
All in favor of accepting consent agenda items, raise your right hand. All in favor, motion passes. Next, regular agenda items. Request to allow a front and rear setback variance for a carport addition to an existing carport located at 1001 West 13th Street, submitted by B. Pedrosa.
This request is, um, to add on 12 feet from the existing carport. Um, and so it is showing the existing front carport setback was built all the way to the property line, and so they're wanting to extend that 12 feet to the east from that side of the house. And so they'll be within the setback for the side yard. It'll just be encroaching on that front setback, and then it already has an encroachment. And then on the rear of the house, the lot is really small, and so we're about three feet from the property line on the rear. Um, so they would also need variance requests from the rear as well to go in line with the house. So... There's the property, and then this is the sketch that the advocate provided. So right here is where the carport's gonna go.
It's gonna extend 12 feet?
Yeah, 12 feet from the side of the house and the carport. Shug, you want anything?
Nope. Uh, it's gonna be fully concrete. They're gonna concrete the whole thing along the side of the house, uh, to serve as the driveway carpet.
Well, we're not gonna move the house.
Yes.
So if it's offset from the other way...
Yeah, there's like 30 feet from the side of the front street property line, um, total distance from the house, so they'll still have like 20-ish feet or something.
Yeah, about 18 to 20 feet left over from the edge of the carport to the property line. Um, so that typically would be a 15-foot setback, but so there'd still be plenty of rain.
Yeah. I'm just saying, where it is now, we're not gonna change them on that, and if they're in guidance with the offset.
The one thing that I would like to add, I guess, is that, um, because it is getting up to that property line on both sides, you know, one thing that I'd like to ask is, is it metal construction, or is it wooden, or what? Because there's special provisions you have to do if you get too close to a property line, a side property line, or front, if it's made of combustible material. In this case, they're gonna match the existing design of the carport that's existing, which is a metal frame, um, so it seems to fall in line with what we've accepted.
Well, thank you for your expertise on that, because I didn't know.
The staff recommendation also is to, it meets all the other, pretty much. It's just an extension of what was there.
Yeah, yeah. In the future, we would probably not recommend anything that is going all the way to the property line like that, but like Shug said, because of the type of construction it is, and it's not gonna be next to any other structure.
Any more discussion? We have a motion to allow the front rear setback variance.
I'll say.
All in favor of allowing the front and rear setback variance for a carport addition to an existing carport, raise your hand. All in favor, motion passes. Next, award bank depository bid for fiscal year October 1st, 2024 through September 30th, 2026.
Ready?
Yes.
Currently, we utilize Citizen State Bank as the depository for the city of Caldwell. I believe the current rate is 1.66. Um, you have the two bids in front of you. Citizens came in at 2.00, and then Prosperity submitted a tiered rate, which is on the second page of this document. But kind of our, just even idea, our auditors, I won't say recommendation, but we've been working with a, uh, a consultant on the financial side as well. What we're looking at doing is instead of the 18 or so bank accounts we carry right now, we're gonna be funneling down into one pooled cash account. So if you're looking at the Prosperity bid, we would be on that tier seven, which is 3%. So making that change right now, this is kinda all rolling, happening at a good time to whether we're gonna go into one pooled account. We might as well, if we're gonna move banks, now's the time to do it. So, uh, if you're looking at that tier seven, a million dollars and above, that rate's at 3% compared to the 2% that's offered from Citizen State Bank. So of course, our staff recommendation would be to go with the higher rate.
We have a motion to award the depository bid to Prosperity Bank?
So move.
Give a second. Wanna look a little further?
Yeah. I have a question. How, how, where did, um, because in all the years I've been here, Prosperity has never, ever overbid Citizen. How, where are they coming up with?
In, in the past, we've used Prosperity. This last time was the first. If my memory serves correct, and this one's not, or anything else.
I thought for some reason, or maybe it was, maybe it's the time warrant that we...
The time warrant says...
Okay, okay, maybe that's what I'm thinking. Okay, maybe that's what I'm thinking of then. Gotcha.
Also, it doesn't show, I'm afraid it doesn't have a maximum deposit.
25 million. Oh, they said they can accept or decline in excess of 25 million.
But the majority of our funds, again, we're trying to move into Texas class, so we're bringing a little bit more interest as well.
So where's that gonna fall? If we do that, where's that gonna, is that still gonna put us in tier, that'll keep us in tier seven?
Yes, because we're taking all of our, we're just gonna use 18 as a number, 18 accounts, and funneling down to one pooled cash account. We'll have one, one account prepared.
Are we, is it not a big deal to switch to Prosperity?
No, now's the time to do it. We're consolidating all those accounts.
I'll take the defense.
Okay. All in favor of awarding Prosperity Bank the bank depository bid for fiscal year October 21st, 2024 through September 30th, 2026, raise your hand. All in favor, motion passes. Next, conduct the election for the Texas Municipal League Intergovernmental Risk Pool Board of Trustees for Places 11 through 14, each for a six-year term. So if we can, uh, vote on Place 11? Do you want us to just say it, or write it on the paper, and then you will count the ballot?
We can do that.
You want, do you want us to vote and select during the meeting?
Yes.
So in, in the past, there's been some minor discussion, kind of each candidate, and then consensus of council members, but we can do it however y'all'd like to tonight.
Do y'all know any of these people?
No.
Any recommendations of these people?
Mr., so Mr. Barnett used to serve on the TML board for a long time, and he would always like to, uh, if I remember correctly, kind of vote on members, kind of the same, similar size of town. Had some similarities. That gives any help? Is that right?
So if you take a coin, it can come up?
Yes.
Where's yours?
Sure, it's a San Antonio.
Okay.
San Jose, South Houston.
Well, we gotta go.
It's just a matter of checking.
You want to vote?
Sure. Rocky Hawkins? Okay, vote. I place 13.
I can do 14.
Uh, the incumbent, yes, for Place 13.
I would say so.
Okay.
Last one.
Last one, easy.
I'll go with my random 15.
I'm gonna decline my vote on that one.
Okay, not quite so intense. Next, conduct the election for the Texas Municipal League Region 10 Board of Directors, each for a two-year term.
I believe he receives emails from maybe a couple of these members?
From Mr. Jenkins double A from Smithville.
Did Miss Nicole Thompson also send one?
I'm gonna recommend Jenkins, because he's in our district. Yeah, I'm at, I'm at him.
Representation for Jimmy Jenkins, Sir Smithville.
I come from, you know, this region.
Yes. Jimmy Jenkins, Smithville. All right, next, Department and Community Reports. Are citizens still using the, uh, citizen is, uh, reporting for like tow issues?
I don't get to any of that. I think only like two.
Okay.
Well, there were three, but two were from the same department, which is one that's right next door to the other. And then that's the only ones I got for this one. Now, I don't know what it does, only the other departments does.
So yeah, good.
When it starts raining, we'll have some rain. It's a little bird. We'll pray for that.
And the subdivision behind Walmart and Brookshires, did they give a, like timeline when the first set of houses will be done? Because they've really been working.
Um, so they are expected to complete construction in February, next year for infrastructure, and then after that, it starts selling lots, um, so probably spring, 25, depending on weather and all that.
County Road 105, has they come back to?
They have not. They, they did ask if there would be a specific amount of lots that y'all would approve. If there was like a percentage of smaller lots that y'all would allow them to bring forward, and then those are...
Did you get our feel?
I did, and I responded to the, we asked feel, but they asked if there was a certain percentage of lots that y'all would be okay with.
Zero.
Yeah.
Anything on reports, guys?
Look, target route for the U truck.
Bus truck?
Yeah, my truck.
Yeah, we're, we're not designed yet, but we're running it this week, just so we can get a steel bar and see how it goes. Then we still gotta put together a set of guidelines to take those, follow, and picture the route, so it's going.
You came through the neighborhood today?
Yep. Those outskirts was on Tuesday, so. Then jump will be on, located on, like, jump will be on Mondays, and then the town split up on Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday.
Okay, if we don't have any discussion on Department and Community Reports, onto Administrative and elected official reports. Mr. White?
Don't have much right now, but I did wanna let y'all know, we had a pre-construction meeting for the Arvo project, so the two lift stations that was last week. Tomorrow, we'll have a pre-construction meeting on the GLO Streets and Drainage Project, so hopefully we'll get rolling soon, and just schedule the, on the sewer part of the GLO. Other than that, I cannot think of anything. Have any questions? Been a long day.
Paperwork completed for, uh, we had a report to do.
Oh, yeah, the, uh, RFI that was for the Public Utility Commission was done and submitted at the area, so.
Yeah.
Haven't, haven't had any comments back from them. That's so, on that, I don't know if I mentioned before, out of the 122 counties that were declared disaster areas prior to that storm hitting, all 122 counties, every electric provider in those counties got the same RFI. So I think they're gonna be sorting through things for a while.
Melissa?
Uh, can you, can you give us an update, or just fill everybody in on Atmos?
So the Atmos, we talked about, we actually brought it to council last month, I think, on the, uh, the easement that we granted Atmos. I've been told that that project is on hold for about a year, so the added capacity is, is on hold. I think there was a element of sticker shock to, from what I understand, the job came in way over what was budget. I don't wanna get into too many details.
Also, you just mentioned Cleb Street. Uh, when do you think that might get started?
Hopefully pretty soon. I think the contractor is motivated. They wanted to get it here pretty quick and get started, so I'll have a better idea after a meeting tomorrow.
Okay. Uh, the Johnny Hill Park oil and gas royalty, uh, are we gonna have that in an agenda of like for a workshop, or discuss what, how we can make, use that money to improve the park?
We can, if that's what the council desires, or we can wait until our, you know, next year's budget, however council wants to operate that. We have projects that we wanna discuss for the park before next budget year, then, you know, the mayor can put something on there. I can, if other council members wanna do the same.
Well, do y'all, or don't you?
We can do it before the next meeting. Yeah, let's, let's add something to the next month's meeting about possible park project.
Okay. And the Army Electric Water Meters status?
They're still waiting on, they're on order.
Okay.
So as soon as those come in, we'll, we'll start with residential, the electric part. We're still waiting on them to put the infrastructure on our water tower, so there are feeders and all that network. And then once we get that put up, as the meters are coming in, they'll be installed.
So they working on putting up any type of equipment?
Not that I'm worried, but they've got it on order.
Okay. Uh, you mentioned some of it earlier, transfer of all the money into Texas class investment status.
It's just that slow, we have other projects that we're working on.
Has Stockraps newly added subdivision that all the city requirements, if y'all giving, be okay?
We have accepted that.
Okay, so. Drainage ditches, Tom was gonna give me credit for getting the ditches from Temple all the way behind OAC cleaned out, and now we're on North Shaw Street. What are we gonna do to go from behind Super Donuts to hallway, Highway 36?
It's full of water right now. There was a water leak we found coming from behind the convenience store over there. We didn't, didn't, they give the city, city leak, I must spend something with them, so I said, we got a bunch of water in there right now. It's on the list, and we'll get in there. Of course, it's gonna be the wrong time of the year now.
That's what, that's what I'm saying. If it's not gonna get any drier.
It's, uh, it's just impossible to get something in there that night. Not for a while. Went as far as we could, and then it's...
Would it be something that we could do with a dozer, or?
I think we could get a dozer in there, we could.
Because I know they're running out of real estate to, on, on that backside, and that's got some timbers in there. And I was told by Carmen that snakes have been coming out there right and left. Okay. Also, the completion of the board wall. Do you wanna give an update on that?
Well, it turned in way more than what we thought. We thought we were just gonna replace the runners and boards, but all the posts were, were rotten, so they went back with, uh, metal posts. Then we noticed when they took it off, it's getting some undermining up underneath the road and the curb, so then I had a concrete guy come in there, and he put a head wall of a length, so we fixed that. And then, uh, they put it back. Like I said, it's metal posts, and looks, looks really good.
It's really nice.
They did a good job on it. It's well constructed.
Uh, correct me if I'm wrong, on, on the park trails, are we getting bids on, uh, possibly doing some asphalt overlay on some of it?
It's gonna be some reconstruction on 300th Ridge, but, uh, we're, we determine how much we wanna do, or whatever.
We can discuss that next month, because it's, I mean, that's not gonna be a cheap process. I think we may look at doing, you know, something different than just asphalt, because it didn't hold very well. I think we've done several different things over the past, so we did a crack seal up there.
We did crack seal once. Plus, that was put down in, you know, it was the original, original part, you know, 2004. I don't know when the back four, few years after that. Of course, it was put down, they tried to think, pulverized it with potash that time, then they went with asphalt. It did well for a while, but just like any street in town with this, I've got now everything is cracking and stuff, so I don't know what we'll go back. We'll just go with the level up and overlay, but there has to be some reconstruction on that part.
And that's, that's the only thing that people have come to me and mentioned, and I know that, I think you and Doris had a conversation about it at the park one day. So I was just wondering if that was still in the works. Uh, next question, have, have you and Doris set up a meeting with Dustin Stanford to go look at some of his suggestions for the disc golf?
We hadn't, I hadn't talked to him, and...
Well, I know you've had the, a whole lot of...
I just don't know when we're gonna have time to do that. You know, I'm running for Peter to pay Paul right now with nine departments, sanitation out and stuff. I just don't have manpower to do lots of stuff like that. Yeah, 30 foot of mulch around each basket and stuff. You know, I can burn some of the mulch if they wanna put it out. You know, I don't know when we'll have time, to tell you the truth. Convert over from sanitation to everything else.
Okay.
You know, I just, I'd love to do it and get it right now, but we, we just don't have the manpower to do it right now. I'm not saying it won't be done, it can't be done, but, you know, when we can fit it in, well, we can try. That's not gonna be no easy deal. Then we're gonna have grass grow up in it, then we're gonna mow it, you're gonna scatter the mulch everywhere else. I just don't think it's a great idea myself. That's my opinion. You know, you put 40 foot around there, and then the grass grows up, what you gonna do with it? You're gonna have to run over it. And, well, I don't know. That's just, that's just my opinion. I'll do whatever you want, but we just have to fit it in.
Thomas, I'd ask a question. I'm not, uh, but I'm, I'm just saying, we got those paths there, we got holes between the paths where the forms were. Yeah, yeah, that would, that would, that would suffice.
We can do that as far as that part.
Yeah.
That's 18 holes.
Yeah, I understand.
We can get dirt around the paths. Yeah, no problem there.
Okay. Uh, this golf tournament that's coming, we talked about before, but just, just for general knowledge, everybody here, that's, they're gonna have a pre-meeting in, end of October, and then the first week in November is the main tournament, and that's bringing in 130 participants. And that doesn't count family and friends. And then, uh, just some general update, uh, Cap Fleet, I talked to JW again. Uh, they've done the asphalt around the building already. They've done the chip seal in the large parking lot, and they're finishing the road probably tomorrow. And the only thing, major thing left to do is install the elevators, and they're coming tomorrow. So should be done sometime before the end of the month, as they said. Root, Tom, they just put down two, uh, yards, uh, grass in around two of the four houses. So, but no for, no soul signs yet, so. And I've had several conversations with people about zoning, and they're all for it. So I haven't heard any negative feedback. That's it.
Uh, are we supposed to be in the parade Saturday? I have you all registered.
I have you all registered. Uh, car, truck, or bike crossboard, or any recommendation on vehicles?
Five parties. Now, whatever is fine.
Okay.
Starts at ten, yes?
Arrange. Nine.
Parade's at ten.
It, it starts at ten, but you need to line up at nine.
Okay. Um, Co-Lodge Festival, thank you to, um, the, all the city workers, electrical, street, every, every entity that was involved. It was a very good day. A little hot, but it was a very good day. I think about ten thousand came, um, lots of positive feedback, so that's good. Next year will be the fortieth, so I think it's going to be some big plans, so.
Downtown area looks super.
It does.
And the, the cement work and removing all the planters and stuff just made it really look good. And the street sweeper is a miracle worker.
Um, no update on City Hall, want to see?
That's good.
No?
We're, we're progressing, we're.
Progressing. Good enough.
Uh, Clap Street, uh, you didn't have the pre-construction meeting?
Tomorrow morning.
I'm, I'm sure you're going to communicate, a lot of people have on their brick and stone mailboxes. Please contact us before you remove it, because you're going to have to remove a lot of them to, you know, like a, you know, the, the line locates everything. I think that was, and, uh, I'm sure they're going to do that well.
We are, Thomas and I have discussed how we go back and, you know, of course, if we take it down, we're going to try to preserve it. If not, we're going to figure out a way to.
Yeah.
Put a, you know, a brick mailbox back.
Right.
We're there staying a while.
That's true, I think that's right.
Because most of them racked up at the house, or some of them that, somewhere at the street. Or they got the regular mailboxes, but just stay in. Um, let's see. Back to the, I was, uh, I want to say there was some anticipation too, when originally a lot of the projects are going on, that behind Walmart was going to be gas, but they're going a hundred percent less. So that's, uh, recently they talked about gas. And so, so now they're really changing mind on that, and then.
Is that accurate for the one oh five development?
Well, one oh five signed a contract. And there's, there was going to be gas, and we want to take the gas out there. Now they're trying to, but, but anyway, um, that's one of the things that they're running into of, trying to add more lots to generate, you know, it's.
Yeah, good point. They were still trying to just have a return on investment.
Yep.
I, I can understand that as a utility.
But there was a lot of anticipation for a lot more, uh, these, these, from the smaller to larger subdivision. Originally going to be gas, now they're not, so the demand for theirs, of course, are significant. Um, the Co-Lodge Festival was good. Saw my ear in the briefly, but, um, a lot of people, a lot of things. The only thing that was, the only thing that people asked for is a little more trash cans. They were, they were walking with their trash, we had a big dumpster out, and they had some small cans out with it. Those, before we had dumpsters on the corners, which was kind of hard to get to, and they were picking them up. But, uh, you know, just more places than dump track. That, that was my, but, um.
Yeah, one more thing, the Temple Street drainage, what we're doing, we, we talked about bringing that back at this meeting. Um, Thomas is doing to it, he put a lot of time into it. What we found is we really need an exhibit from our engineers to make sure we get it right, so we get the right rebar in there. So we, you know, basically, we get all the specs that we need to do it right the first time, instead of just having some guesswork. So I know Strand is working on putting an exhibit together, that, that, then we could take out and go for, go out for bids and compare apples to apples instead of, well, this guy wants to do it this way, but this guy is fifteen thousand dollars cheaper, and he's using, you know, sort of a lesser product.
Or, were that, weren't there going to be three proposals?
There, right, but we still need some.
Right.
Things around those.
Okay.
Really, we're just having, because on, I see no use to go in three foot up on that thing. We're not accomplishing anything. Not going to go up all the sides, and then you've got your barrier from losing your road and everything else. I, I didn't even put that, John, because it's.
Hundred percent.
My opinion, I may say different, but.
I said in the last meeting. I said when we discussed it. I agree with you.
That's a good idea.
Okay, anything else? Okay, um, thank you all for coming. We are going to convene now into executive session, so see you next month.